We stand for pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Lawson.
Here.
Mr. Cox.
Here.
Mr. Graven.
Here.
Mr. Phipps.
Here.
Mayor Hall.
Here. Consent agenda. Items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will occur unless a council member requests the item to remove, to be removed from the consent agenda. If an item is removed from the consent agenda, it will be considered elsewhere on the agenda for this meeting. Prior to asking for a motion to approve the consent agenda, the mayor will ask if anyone desires to remove an item from the consent agenda for public discussion. Would anybody like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I move at the minutes of the regular meeting of June the 20th, 2023, the bills and payroll for the last half of June 2023, and council decision request 2023-2385, rescinding council decision request 2023-2382, waiving the formal bidding requirements, and authorizing purchase of a 2024 Chevrolet E450 Trauma Hawk ambulance for American, or from American Emergency Vehicles, A E V, in the amount of $281,746.11, and the mayor to sign the agreement, to sign the purchase order. Can I have a second to that?
Second.
Commissioner Cox and, uh, roll call.
Mr. Lawson.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Graven.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes.
Presentations, petitions, and communications. This portion of the city council meeting is reserved for persons who desire to address the council. The Illinois Open Meetings Act mandates the city council may not take action on comments received on matters that had not been identified on this agenda, but the council may direct staff to address the topic or refer the matter for action on the agenda for another meeting. Persons addressing the council are requested to limit their presentations to three minutes and to avoid repetitious comments. We would also ask you state your name and address for the record as well as stand when speaking. Would anybody like to address the council tonight?
Yes.
Okay, we got, we got three parties that would. Let's start with the gentleman in the front. Sir, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the mic because we have people online, uh, and that way they can hear you.
Dave Maxson.
Yes.
Dave Maxson.
What was? Did you get that? What was your name again?
Dave Maxson.
Maxson. Dave Maxson. Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, yeah. Why is it all of a sudden you're gonna start putting your trash can out on the curb? They start to make town look like a crash.
Okay. I will, I, that's a good, very good question, sir, and I'm gonna let Kyle address that because he's been closest to this issue.
He's already told.
Yeah, I've been talking. But there's been a couple other things as well. I've been, I've been trying to reach out to waste management and it is hard to get somebody. So I feel sorry for anyone that's trying to do service with them. That is really hard, but I do have an email contact of a gentleman and, uh, he has not returned my call yet, but I am working with them and trying to get them to at least put out reminders, tell people that they can only be out for 24 hours. You know, they're not to be leaving the trash containers out on the streets. There is, you know, still, again, I've been telling people if, if their neighborhood really wants it in the alley, then they should be looking and talking to other trash haulers that will pick up in the alley.
If that's what they made out, the outfit, the alley's in for on the third.
Sir, I'd, I'd like to comment on that also. Uh, I, I think all of the council, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I think all the council agrees with you that we, we would like to improve the looks of the city and we would like people to move their trash cans back to, on their property, not on the street, not on the boulevard, and not on the sidewalk. So, so what we can do is, of course, let them know that they cannot do that. The ordinance says they cannot do that, and we're gonna have to start taking some action against people if they don't start moving their trash cans. Most people do it, but there are those.
It would be eliminated if they went back picking up in the, in the alley.
Yeah, right. Yeah. Well, the, the problems with the, uh, the same company picking it up in the alley is that their equipment has got so big now that.
They need what they had before they, when they bought the outfit.
Oh, yeah. No, I agree. I agree. We, we don't disagree.
It's their problem.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I'm, I'm with you. We're trying to do something about that. I don't know if anybody else.
Well, I, I was just saying, I agree with you. I mean, it's a, uh, it, it's a private business, private enterprise, but they're the only ones that have that requirement that they will not pick up in the alley. Is that correct? Is waste management, they're the only ones that, that.
They're the ones that are telling their customers.
That will not pick up in the alley. And so, you know, as consumers, people do have a choice, and there are some local businesses that, that they have an option to switch to that will go, that will pick up in the alley.
Well, I'm, all I'm getting at is that it looks trade, makes the city look for trash.
Yep, I agree with you.
Even if they put it like he says on their own property instead of out there, it still looks trash.
Yeah.
If you don't have an alley behind you, I can see setting it out there. But there are, there's people that can't drag their trash can around all the time.
Yeah. Right. Yeah. We're working, we're working on it. I'll assure you of that. We're trying to get it improved.
Another question I have is why was the, uh, approval for this new deal out here by Walmart not put before the voting to vote on?
Uh, well, we did have public meetings, of course, on the subject, and the public was invited multiple meetings, and we did, we did have the opportunity for people to come and address the council, which we had, which we addressed their questions at that time. But the council were looking to ways to improve the city. We look at it as an economic project that's gonna.
But you're not gonna own anything in it after it's all done.
Well, what we will be have is property owners, the city doesn't own the property that you have, we won't own the property that's out there, but what will happen is the city, those people that build those property, they'll pay sales tax, they'll have property tax, that'll feed the city at that time and pay off the debt also.
It still ain't right. I don't care. I think the public should have got a chance to vote on yes or no.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Thank, okay. Thank you for coming. We have some, uh, yes, ma'am.
Hi there. I am Heather Strack, address 2308 Mulberry. And I'm here, uh, I'm a public school teacher 27 years. I am here to address the issue of city hall being locked down.
Okay.
So preserving democratic values, why city halls should remain accessible to the public and never be locked down, especially for health and safety concerns, which would mean a vote of no confidence should it be made against the leadership. City halls hold a significant role in the democratic governments, serving as a central hub for civic engagement and citizens' participation. Preserving open access to these institutions are essential for upholding democratic principles, ensuring transparency, fostering public trust, and facilitating meaningful citizen participation. City halls represent the physical embodiment of democratic governments at local level. Their administrative centers where elected officials and bureaucrats carry out their duties, making decisions that impact our lives of the citizens and shape the futures of our communities. As such, city halls should be open and accessible to all citizens, affirming the principle of popular sovereignty, where power ultimately resides with the taxpayers and the people. Democratic governments rely on active participation of citizens in public affairs. Open access to the city halls provides citizens with the opportunity to observe and participate in the government proceedings such as council meetings, public hearings, and budget discussions. This accessibility promotes accountability, as citizens can hold their elected officials and bureaucrats responsible for their actions, decisions, and policies. It allows for depth and meaningful engagement between the government and the government, reinforcing the democratic ideals of representation, responsiveness, and inclusivity. Transparency, okay, is the cornerstone of democratic governments, and the city hall plays a crucial role in upholding this principle. By providing open access to city halls, the government demonstrates its commitment to transparency and ensures decision-making processes are visible, understandable to the public. Citizens have the right to witness government proceedings and as these events directly impact their lives and communities. Open access to city halls encourages government officials to act with integrity and accountability, knowing that their actions are subject to public scrutiny. Moreover, city halls serve as spaces where citizens can actively engage with their local government. Voice concerns, this gentleman here, uh, he didn't know when it was voted on. I mean, things of that nature. We need to be able to propose our ideas and contribute to the policy in making progress. Locking down city halls would restrict this essential avenue for citizens' participation, inhibiting their ability to exercise democratic rights, and stifle their voices. Public access to city hall fosters a sense of ownership and investment in local governments promoting civic pride and community cohesion. By engaging with their local government, citizens can collectively address community issues, leading to better informed decisions that align with the needs and aspirations of the people. While security concerns are valid and must be addressed, complete lockdowns of city halls should not be the default response. Implementing alternative security measures such as enhanced screening protocols, controlled access points, and collaboration between law enforcement agencies and government officials can effectively address security risks while preserving public access. By striking a balance between security and public access, government can uphold democratic values, promote citizen engagement, and foster a trust between the public and their elected representatives. In conclusion, open access to city hall is vital for upholding democratic principles, ensuring transparency, fostering public trust, and facilitating meaningful citizen participation. Locking down these institutions would undermine the fundamental tenets of democracy and citizens' abilities to engage with their local government. By implementing alternative security measures, defining the balance between security and public access, government can maintain a safe and open environment within city halls, preserving the democratic ideals that are the foundation of our society. So, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm wondering why our city hall is locked down, and I know that you don't have to answer that.
Yeah.
But, uh, I've heard security, number one, I walked in with a gentleman, he's not here today, I, I thought maybe you might be an administrator here, and he said it was for safety reasons. Now, I'm a public school. And, uh, I'm not scared, okay? I go to work every day.
Yeah.
Uh, I worked at Danville High School. I served students with a behavior disorder that shut down for Green and Green. In, in came the influx down to Danville. I wasn't scared. There were weapons in the school. There were drugs in the school. I still showed up to do my job. I've been doing it for 27 years. So I know a lot of the community because I have asked, why is city hall shut down, you guys? I don't know. Well, I didn't know it was. I didn't know it was. Well, it is. And just me being me, you know, I teach kids that these are public buildings. We, the citizens, we, the people, pay, pay to keep these buildings open. They should be open. There's no, libraries open, I talked to the mailman today, public post office is open, why city hall locked down? Because I know for three months when I didn't have any students in my classroom, I just wasn't as productive, okay? That's just flat out honesty. When I'm not held to account, things, well, you might be watching the NCAA on TV or whatever, I, I've seen it in my own school buildings. So I think it's very important that you guys are the role models for the community, for me. I teach my students that these buildings should be open. That's civics. So that's my concern, and I will continue to, I, you know, I'll speak to the post van that lost, post lady today. I talk to everybody. I'm out in the community, Home Depot, I'm working on a project on my house. Why is this? Everybody wants to get back to normal, and I think you guys are the role models for that. Let's open this city up. I'm tired of beating on the door to my city hall. It should not be that way. Thank you.
Ma'am, I, I would actually welcome the opportunity to comment about you. One is, I think you are also absolutely right in what you're saying, except for one thing. I don't define city hall as a, a building that is locked down. And here's why. Anybody can get into this building at any time they want, just like you walked in tonight. Every committee that we have in the city, let me finish. Every committee that we have is open to the public. You don't have to, you don't have to be stopped at the door, okay? Every person that comes to that door down there that wants to talk to a city person, including the mayor, can come in anytime you want, you just have to call up in advance. One of the problems, we want to serve everybody that we can that are sitting in the back and have a need. We want to do that. What we're trying to prevent from happening is we don't want people just walking through the building.
What, sir? That is our right as American citizens.
Yeah, okay.
At any time, walk in this building.
If you, if you walk up, if you want to walk through the building, you call my office, okay? Okay. So now, and then one, one other comment.
Appreciate your willingness, but you shouldn't have to do that. These doors should be open. If I, I.
You're, ma'am, ma'am, you talked about you worked at your school.
Yes.
And, and, and it's open, it's not. Your school was locked down, just the way this building is. You cannot get in, where do you work at? It's at Mattoon, in school?
Uh, it's not, sir, in Mattoon. I do not, I do not work in Mattoon district.
Okay. So all Mattoon schools are locked down?
Um, yes, they are. I would not always say, just like we've seen in text, you know, the cropping of the doors, funding, you know, I, I think we can say that's a lockdown, um, but, you know, no security.
I would, again, one of the reasons why we've.
Worried about, I'm worried about city hall.
Is your server locked down on YouTube, Netflix, all the, all the streaming videos? If your server locked down.
What is his name?
Well, we need your name and your address.
Well. There's a lot of solutions to this that would make people happy, but I can guarantee employees are sitting.
We'd like to have your name.
My name is Mike Strack. I'm her, I'm her husband.
Same address then. Okay.
So we would like to make sure that that's not happening. That's the first concern of mine, because I know that whenever there's a lock, you will watch TV instead of doing work. And you just smile when you're there because I'm coming for your job.
Yeah, okay. That's a good, and I welcome, and I welcome.
My master's degree in political science, because I don't think any of you got a degree in political science, so you're kind of weak in it. And that's kind of scary. But what's gonna happen is, is we're gonna get some things changed in this town, and here's the thing that I, so now my three minutes, I won't take seven or eight minutes like that. You have your duty.
Okay.
You got a duty to enforce laws and regulations if you have them. I'm sitting over here with power, no power for 10 months. I've got approval, right? You've approved it from certain instances, ready for service. I've been sitting, waiting for power for 10 months.
Power. What kind of power?
You have let me down as a citizen.
And me.
And her.
What kind of power? Help us with that. What, what kind of power are you talking about?
Fully aware of this.
Am, am.
You got regulatory authority and oversight to perform. You got a life fully expected. You can certify my property as ready, but yet I'm still waiting on here? Now, Amber's trying to say that there's some kind of labor bypass that I gotta have. They got no authority to enforce that unless you guys pass the law that circumvents the ICC. That's what they're wanting you to do. They're wanting you guys to pass this thing to enforce their service mandate that hasn't even been approved by the ICC. That's a violation of the law, gentlemen and ladies. So if you do that, I'm coming out and be on that too. I'm gonna sue you for that, because you're already facing a lawsuit, you're responding discovery and a case against Amber, because as soon as I get the emails more of this, because I've gotten it from Sullivan, because they actually passed it. They made the mistake of passing it. So now they're in pursuit of circumventing the ICC, and that's illegal. That's fraud, and that's misrepresentation. So let me just go over what you guys have a duty to do, because I need you to understand, because you got no, no out of this, and these are the counts that I'm gonna get you on. Collaboration with a state agency, that would be you collaborating with Amber. There's a collaboration going on. Duty to protect the consumer, that's me. Duty to prevent harm. Legal authority and force mechanisms. The city of Mattoon goes into legal authority and force mechanisms to hold utility companies accountable. You guys got that power. You could make a simple phone call and say, get this guy's power. You're hiring. He's going for a settlement. 10 months. What are you guys sitting there for 10 months waiting for your power? I'd love to see you do it. You wouldn't. You wouldn't. Collaboration with regulatory agencies. So now you'd be, if you do that with them, you're circumventing the ICC. That's illegal, and you will be held accountable for that. Duty for redress, which we're gonna write, okay? But with the door locked, which I came up here four times, I carry my cell phone, do you got a phone in the vestibule, or do I just kick the door and tell it price? What am I supposed to do?
We are working on it.
I know you're. You can't do that without having some kind of phone there.
We, we've had that in the works, but we're wait, we've got, we're going over to the voice.
See, on the door, you know.
Voice of right beat.
Sorry.
Anyway, oh, it's your public safety. You're using that very excuse to lock the door. Public safety is disgusting. Disgusting. You should be saving my safety. You should be giving me a house that has power, that's been approved by your city that says, hey, it's ready to go. But Amber's sitting there holding out. You got a duty to promote economic development, like you just told this gentleman here. Is my past not important to economic development? I mean, I'm, it's waiting for 5,000 watts of solar to go onto the grid. That's what the holdup here is. There's an economic development for you. You got a house that's ready to put 5,000 watts back on the grid, a house of 1,000 square feet. You think I'm gonna be using all the power? There's seven hours a day I'm gonna make power in this house, and there's four hours a day in this little room. So there's your economic development. Get me timing. Get on board with me. Get me my power like I deserve. Duty to provide residential needs. Duty to uphold rule of law. Failure to enforce rights and provide power. Negligence of breach of duty, okay? I mean, these are all the things that, that I've said in class on my pursuit of my master's degree in legal studies and political science. And I sit there with PTSD every day because I sit there and go, that ain't what my, my city's doing. And I wonder, well, is that because of the leadership? It used to be. You guys are leaders. Like she said, give her the, the B D M H, lead by example. That's the number one rule in the military. See? That's all I got to say. This is your complaint. I don't leave this for you.
Thank you.
Okay. This, this is a whole different thing altogether. Now approach, I don't.
Sure, no, no.
Beat anybody.
No.
Yes. Situation where, after I told you guys.
Is this different than what we talked about, or is it?
This is different.
Okay.
This is after I emailed whoever and said, I'm gonna come for your job, I'm mayor. Uh, I get pulled over, 30 seconds, I'm a handcuffs to the back of squad car in sweatpants. I've suffered heart conditions now since that incident. Here's what he said, you filled a plug. Oh, I still turn my car off on a 98 degree day with my dog and my wife in the car. Not gonna do that. I don't care who tells me to do it, I'm not gonna do that. Not gonna do it, I'm sorry. Not to point you out. It was because you hit him with the door. No, it wasn't. No. What is it, sir?
I've watched the body camera.
It don't matter.
That's why he put you in.
That's right. See, this is inadequate training by your partner. Let's stand behind a door and say, here are your power, here are your power. Where am I supposed to open the door? In?
Probably not into the officer.
And see, if you stood over here, I would like.
It's not one of the smarter.
Anyway, here, talking right now, this is, this is why, because I'm coming for your job too. Just the thing, we're going to make it so that we can get rid of the police department.
Okay. We, we, we've got this in writing. We gave you more than three minutes.
Police department, we're gonna replace it with the sheriff's department when I come in here, because we're gonna save on retirements. We're not gonna pension it anymore. We've got, we've got a law enforcement that isn't even trained adequately.
We.
If you ever signed authorization.
We do need to, we, we've been, a lot more, we're a lot more time than what we said.
Yes, I know.
If you want to come and talk to me about this, we'll, we could do that.
When?
Anytime. As long as I don't have a congress.
When are you in the bill? I mean, are you here every day?
Just about. Just about.
Just about. Yes, we'll just about come then. I'll be here tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your officer should be trained better. He's what, should they? But don't worry, I'm gonna be ready to report them off the others. It's gonna be going back. The sheriff department is way better, that's the elected official. He has a moral obligation to do the law correctly instead of being a retirement.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Have a good night. Yeah, you too.
Okay. Anybody else like to talk to the council tonight? All right. Hearing none, thank you all for your patience. New business.
Mr. Lawson. Motion to adopt special ordinance number 2023-1861, authorizing the purchase of 1.111 acres of real estate in the amount of $24,442 from Spear Regarding Holdings LLC and AJMA Holdings LLC for the Bike Trail/Hotel Connection Project, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign the warranty deed.
Can I have a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Phipps? And any comments anybody has, any.
This is just for that bike trail connection, for the bike trail up to Broadway Avenue East.
Yeah.
And it's kind of got a rock road back there right now, going to a lift station anyway, so.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Graven?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes.
Dave. I was still thinking about that other, that first motion, that first motion. That also, that also ties into the, it's, it's a big important step, the first, his motion.
Okay.
For grant, uh, for grant access to the complex, by the way.
Okay.
I make a motion to adopt resolution 2023-3253, approving the funding of motor fuel tax funds in the amount of $275,296.42 for the milling and H M A resurfacing of the roads in the amount of $275,296.42 for the milling and HMA resurfacing of the roads located on 14th Street, 6th Street and Melody Lane and authorizing the city clerk to sign the document.
Can I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Commissioner Cox, and any comments, questions?
At the last council meeting, we approved the, the bid for it, having that done. And this is actually just having it approved through IDOT to pay for it.
Through MFT.
Through MFT funds, yep.
Okay, any other questions? And roll call.
Commissioner Raven?
Yes.
Commissioner Phipps?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes.
I move to adopt resolution number 2023-3254 authorizing the partnership with Rent Fund for the establishment of a self-service kayak rental system at Lake Mattoon and allocation of funds from the revolving loan fund in the amount of $18,000.
Second on that motion?
I'll second.
Commissioner Cox, and any comments on this one?
I've got some questions.
Okay, sure.
Um, do you know how much revenue that they're, did they do any kind of projection with only four kayaks and how they're going to pay this loan back over a five-year period?
Yeah, so I think I included it in the packet I sent out.
It was a 50% revenue that we get gross revenue. And it said four kayaks, but it didn't, that I saw, maybe I missed it, where it basically estimated over that five-year lease, how they're going to pay that 18,000 or how we're going to get back with the gross revenue.
Yeah, so essentially, I, I just worried about a packet with that. Uh, so my apologies there. Uh, but essentially, uh, you know, looking at similar markets like Charleston, uh, you know, they're on track to pay back their initial investment with the same amount in, in two years as opposed to five, uh, which is the length of the program. Uh, so, you know, I believe within the first 10 weeks of the program, their portion of that, that new share was about $2,000. Uh, so, you know, I mean, if we have similar numbers at Lake Mattoon, I mean, it's going to paper itself eventually. Uh, and I would say probably very similarly, uh, to, uh, you know, the kind of expedited return that comes that's happening.
So how many kayaks does Charleston rent?
Uh, I believe they have four currently. And so we would have four as well as kind of the same price point. There's an opportunity to expand that eight, uh, provided the success of the program. Again, given how the contract is, uh, you know, written, we'd be able to exit it at any time if we felt it wasn't beneficial to the city. Uh, but, you know, again, this is another piece of quality of life as an economic development strategy. New amenities for residents, more things to do.
No, I'm, I'm not against it by any means. I'm, I'm all for it. I'm just concerned that, that, you know, loaning 18, they're basically loaning 18,000. Whether we're going to be able to recoup our, our money.
Well, and so in the contract, it specifically states, uh, I believe that we're able to set that fee. There's two options, I believe. Uh, one of them is a kind of flat early rate. And then the other is one that's more so just kind of days ago, um, in terms of like, you know, chunks of time. Uh, so, you know, the fee that the council sets.
You mean for the rentals?
Yeah, for the rentals. Uh, you know, we'd essentially, I guess, determine how quickly that will get paid back based upon use. But you definitely want to strike a balance for, you know, you don't want to be overcharging for something. Then folks might not use it. But, uh, again, looking at the numbers from Charleston, I mean, they, they made two grand in 10 weeks on that. Uh, and are on track, uh, you know, to be able to act in two years.
Any other questions anybody has? Uh, roll call then.
Commissioner Phipps?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Raven?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes.
Uh, make a motion to adopt resolution 2023-3255 approving an updated intergovernmental agreement by and between the Illinois Office of the Controller and the City of Mattoon to allow access to the Controller's local debt recovery program and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement.
Hey, can we have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Phipps, and any questions anybody has with that?
I had a couple of comments.
Okay.
The, this, the controller had started this program several years ago and it never got off the ground. And now they're, they're back and I think they're better prepared. Uh, basically, we can submit unpaid water bills. Uh, something we've written off as a bad debt because someone has moved from a property and not paid the bill. Uh, we can go back seven years. And, uh, they will go through state income tax rate funds and recoup that money on our behalf. Um, I had Sarah run a list of the seven-year-old unpaid bills and, um, just under $350,000. So we need to get a fraction of that back.
Okay. Any other, any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Raven?
Yes.
Commissioner Phipps?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes.
Motion to approve council decision request 2023-2386 approving the cost proposal in the amount of $86,170 from Crawford, Murphy and Tilly CMT for the preparation of plans and specifications to replace the existing pump at the Lake Mattoon raw water pump station.
Can I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Commissioner Cox, and any comments?
Uh, these are just some improvements that they're doing. You know, they looked at doing a new water, um, pump station by the causeway, but it was too, too costly. And so they're just basically reinvesting into, uh, our current pumping situation and, and, and plan on continuing to do more work on that to, to make it better.
Any other questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Raven?
Yes.
Commissioner Phipps?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes.
A motion to approve council decision, decision request 2023-2387 promoting Dennis Cole to Assistant Public Works Superintendent with an annual salary of $67,000 effective July 6th, 2023.
Can I get a second on that motion?
Second.
Commissioner Lawson seconds it and, uh, any comments? Kyle?
I'd just say that we had four people that we interviewed for the position, um, good candidates. But Dennis Cole did, did stand out as the one. And, uh, it was unanimous between all three of us in the interviews that, uh, he, he should be the one to get the position. So like his experience and background.
Okay, any other questions? Uh, roll call.
Commissioner Raven?
Yes.
Commissioner Phipps?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes.
I move to adopt ordinance number 2023-5568, 5468 adopting the amendments to chapter 114, liquor control, section 114, dot 22F of the Mattoon Code of Ordinances to increase the number of T1 and T2 special event licensing and to regulate fencing and operations of the events. Can I get a second on that motion?
Second.
Commissioner Cox, and anybody have any comments, questions?
I'll let Alex talk about it since he developed it.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, so we had been approached, uh, by a local, uh, that is holding events. Uh, and so, you know, you might notice that this is a little familiar. We had advised the section a little bit previously. Uh, and essentially, you know, six, or sorry, yeah, the six events were not really enough for what they were trying to accomplish. And so to, you know, better accommodate that and allow for, you know, more public events that involve alcohol in the community, uh, you know, essentially we've developed this ordinance which would allow at a maximum, uh, for 30 total events. So that's essentially one Saturday of every single warm week of the year, um, to be held on city property or public. That's very different from the festival district, uh, type legislation. It's more so just, uh, a single individual, not a larger group, uh, that's able to host that. Um, from there, you know, there's going to be specific stipulations. So it's, it's not, you know, necessarily personal property or anything like that. Um, so as they pass the sixth class T2 licenses, uh, they are able basically, uh, you know, with the, uh, permission of the liquor commissioner to go up to 24 additional licenses per calendar year. Again, each one would have to be applied for, um, and, you know, really just kind of enhances our ability to be more flexible, uh, with organizations that are trying to host events in our community. So overall, I think it's win-win, uh, and, yeah, happy to take any questions.
Actually, I have a question for Sam on the ones that we've had so far with the, have you had any issues?
No, we haven't actually. We, uh, we went down in the amount of officers for the second one because first one was no, no issues. I think we had four officers out for the first one and went just two for the next one.
No, no issues as far as?
Yeah.
Bad behavior?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
So, yes. So the 20, so if they do hit 20, so let's say it, are all 30 of those on their, on their site? That's just adjacent to city property and it kind of spills out or?
So this is specifically for city property. So like the, uh, the business in question is those. And so they have that parking lot in the back area there, uh, that's able to be utilized. They have been utilizing it, uh, no issues there, so as far as I know. Uh, so essentially this expands our ability to grant people to be able to use spaces that are similar to that in our community. I calculated it, it's like they're taking up four parking spaces which are already taken up by a trailer that's there on occasion. Uh, so, you know, really no parking's being lost by this. Uh, it's, you know, it's mostly temporary. Uh, and, yeah, I mean, realistically, if they wanted to fence off, uh, 13,000 square feet there, you'd only lose those four parking lots. Uh, so.
Dave, did you have any other questions?
No, I'm good, thank you.
I'll, I'll, I'll make just a quick comment. I, I met the owners of Joe's and husband and wife team. And the gentleman here is, uh, part of the owners of that group. And, and they seem to be very civic-minded people and want to do things to improve our community. So I feel like that they, you know, we definitely ought to give them a shot and others that want to do something similar. So that's really all I've got to say. Uh, any, okay, so everybody, anybody have any other questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Phipps?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Raven?
I have a sidebar with Dan in a minute.
Excuse me? Okay.
Is that legal? I think so.
She just said.
Yes.
That was a yes vote?
Yes.
Okay. Yes? Okay, what a nice carry. Uh, I move to adopt, uh, special ordinance number 2023-1862 approving the petition for rezoning from R1 single-family residential to C1 neighborhood commercial and granting a special use and a variance for the construction on operation of an indoor sports facility with a medical walk-in clinic. Petitioner is the Mattoon Sports Complex, Inc. And I need to redress that. Okay, uh, can I have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Raven, and, uh, any comments, questions here?
Uh, this is just something that's been, you know, talked about for a long time with the sports complex. Uh, the, the outdoor facilities only require an R1 single-family residence with a special use. Um, and during the long drawn out, uh, process of getting this sports complex going, uh, we kind of forgot about the indoor facility. Um, it, it is required to be a C1 neighborhood commercial, uh, with a special use for the indoor facility. Um, and then medical, we could be in a C2 or a C1 with a special use. But if it's in the C1 with a special use, there's a variance on the square footage of floor space. And we typically in a C1, they only can go up to 1,500 square feet. And it's going to be closer to 5,000 square feet, uh, inside the sports facility. So that's why the variance is tied on with that as well. So, uh, it makes a good buffering between the C3 of, I think it's Cole's Win, Win Center or whatever, the dermatology place and stuff like that. It kind of, it was a good buffer between that C3 and the residential, uh, Long Country Club Road, so. Uh, it passed unanimously through, uh, the planning commission. Did have some neighbors there that I don't think anyone really threw any objections out. They just had some questions on, you know, drainage and stuff like that. So, um, had some good conversations. Uh, one of the things was geese. If the ponds were going to be wet ponds or dry ponds, geese was one that kind of threw everybody off. We weren't thinking about, so give us some more ideas to think about what we want to do and take care of situations like that, but, uh.
Like Walmart's pond?
Yeah.
Yep.
So originally this was all R1, both phases, correct?
Yes.
So we're just making an exemption just for the indoor?
Yeah, there is some other commercial that will happen up closer to Remington Road for some back commercial development. And hotels, yeah.
Any other questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Gray?
Yes.
Commissioner Phipps?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes. I move to approve, approve council decision request 2023-2388 awarding the bid in the amount of $63,595 from Grant Western Abatement, Inc. for the city hall lead-based paint remediation project and authorizing the mayor to sign the proposal. Can I have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Commissioner Cox? Uh, we've talked about this for quite a while, but.
Yeah. Comments? So, you know, this was all started because there is lead-based paint in the building. Uh, we, we were thinking it was going to be closer to $32,000, $35,000. Came in much higher, but all three bids were really close. So I don't think it was, you know, out of, you know, just jacking it up. I, I think it is more of the going rate, um, and how busy people are with, with money out there right now. A lot of abatements and stuff going on as well. So, uh, just recommend that we proceed with it. And it come out the video gaming funds that we use for repair of buildings, so.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Uh, roll call.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Raven?
Yes.
Commissioner Phipps?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes.
Department report, city administrator Kyle Yale.
Been working on several ordinance changes, been working on some staffing, um, working on some of the final changes. We hope it's the final changes to the TIF plan and hope to have it filed, uh, for public review at the city clerk's office this Friday. Um, spoke with a developer today that was looking at the Lee's Famous Recipe lot, trying to get contact information of the owners there. Uh, he's been looking east of 9th Street for three or four months now. But, uh, I guess he's seen the post that Lee's wasn't going to reopen. And he contacted me this morning, trying to get some contact information from them, for them. Trying to get some information gathered to see if we can possibly get a county disaster proclamation. So on the storms that happened last Thursday, paid for some of overtime in our trucks and backhoes. Um, Charleston, I think, kind of started the push for this. And then Coles County Emergency Services reached out to me and asked for some of our numbers. So I've been working on that today as well. Um, been continuing to receive calls on some trees down that are city trees. Been continuing to receive calls on some trees down that are city trees. People call wanting to know if they could go across city property to clean up their trees in their backyards in some areas where we own the property next door or have easements. Been working with Alex on a couple subdivision plots and working with Dan on a review of annexation agreement for a solar farm out west of 43rd Street, which will be coming to us for a public hearing, so. That's all I have, unless you guys have questions on any of that or anything else.
And that goes to the planning commission, the solar farm, July 11th.
Right. Correct.
Thursday.
And they'll also have one in front of the council on the 18th, a public hearing.
City Attorney, Dan Jones.
Nothing really to report, it's business as usual, working with Kyle on that, the solar stuff and Alex, but happy to ask her questions about anything.
Could you give us a update on the Brown Shoe Factory, which I don't think too much has changed since your last report last month, but if you could recap that for me?
So they have hired someone to oversee the teardown process, and I don't know if they've made much progress. Mayor told me before the meeting tonight, there's a, some piece of equipment's out there.
Yeah, big lift with forks and platforms, so they can actually get up to the top and actually start taking bricks off and.
The supervisor was in city court last month, said he was having some trouble getting a crew together, getting guys to show up for work, he is working on that. I hadn't seen the piece of equipment yet. He's due back in city court on next Monday, the 10th, and we're just going to keep bringing him back every month.
This is a gentleman from Kansas?
It is, it's someone they've hired, it's a local.
Yeah.
Guy, and I don't remember his name with me, I'll get you that information.
Okay, so he's in court next Monday, but work, work is continuing in that process. Okay, thank you.
I don't know how quickly, but there's a big new piece of equipment out.
There is some, yeah, right. There is some movement, they didn't have any equipment out there before. We didn't see any body moving, but there was equipment out there. Okay, any other questions?
So is the public staying away from that building? Maybe, Sam, you can address that, if you're getting any calls where people are going inside it, or? I went by one time and a couple kids were just, looked like setting up their personal go-kart track.
How many laps did you do?
Two.
Not as many as you think. Seems like we got more in the past than we have recently.
They put up no trespassing signs, but.
Put up some barriers.
It's gonna be better still.
Some fencing, but enough to really.
Right.
Okay, any other questions on that? City Clerk Susan O'Brien?
Pretty much so, business as usual. I had nothing in particular to report.
Okay. Finance, Beth Reich?
See, the firm's a company back since last Thursday, just over a million dollars, the general fund, just under 20% of what's been levied, and then you'll see that on the revenue tracking, month of, months of May and June are complete, so low right-hand corner, we are ahead of where we were a year ago in total. And restricted cash in the general fund today, 10.74 million, you know, the last meeting was 11.03, but we haven't received any sales tax, shared revenues yet this month, and I've been busy preparing for the audit. All the information requested has been submitted, and I'm seeing the auditors will be here on July 17th. Start here.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Any questions for Beth?
I have one. Beth, the state of Illinois, for lack of a better term, reinstated that 1% grocery tax effective July 1. Is that money collected, is that rebated back to the city, or did we get any of that or a portion of it?
We should receive all of that. There was an announcement previously that they were going to sort of make us whole, and because we lost that, I'm not really sure how those numbers shake out, and so I don't know if we'll stay even or if we'll see an increase. But yes, the city will receive that.
And any, any guesses how much that possibly could be to our budget?
Sitting here right now.
That's fine, just hopefully we get it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You going to talk about Public Works, anything?
I don't. I know there's a lot of projects that Dean's working on, but he didn't give me anything to sit with, talk about.
Yeah, that's fine. Let's see, fire report. I have nothing. And police, Chief Gaines.
In the past two weeks, we had 915 calls for service and 50, just keep it smaller and smaller, 59 arrests, so the sheriff department better get ready. I need to apologize.
I don't know what we're gonna do here. Okay, any other, any other, any other comments?
Brown.
Questions for you?
All right, let's go to Arts and Tourism, you do have something on that? Uh, probably have the, according to Angelia, she thinks the largest Fourth of July parade in the last 18 years. The last entry crossed Western, the beginning of the parade mark, about one hour after start time, so a lot of participation, a lot of good comments from, from citizens that enjoyed the parade yesterday. Great weather, decent crowd, and let's see, I guess one issue that we are continuing to have with the Fourth of July parade is some volunteers to, to help with the parking, which we've used the junior ROTC in the past, but we had about half the number that we needed, and so that's kind of a big challenge moving forward. So we continue to put out calls to several groups, just didn't have any, any takers that were able to, able to help, but the Fourth of July is the hardest one to get on the calendar for volunteers, so that's one thing that will continue to be worked on in the, in future years. The vendors did well, apparently at the fireworks, and a lot of good results, good feedback on the, the food vendors, shows the value of the food trucks, which we're continuing to see more and more of, and the, the airport, like to give them a little shout out because they continue to be a good partner and, and working with the tourism office. Bagel Fest coming up, the operations has moved to the Peterson House, so they've moved the office into the Peterson House. The carnival pre-sale tickets are on sale now. Concert ticket sales are, are good and kind of steady at this point, we're looking for a strong finish on those, and a full schedule has been published that includes what is new this year, and that includes some Star Wars characters that will be on site on Saturday at Bagel Fest, and that's a, a quality group of semi-professional characters, and then a couple new contests, there's a mustache and beard contest, and some lenders' bagel games are going to be in the Rotary Band Shell, and free carnival games on site the day of the Christian concert with Colton Dixon, which is going to be operated by local churches. And then I did have a question, are you familiar, or are you aware that there's no air at the depot?
Yes, they're waiting on a, waiting on a drive shaft for the cooling tower.
Okay.
It's been promised last week, the last three weeks, so we're one part holding us up, so, and then.
Parts on order?
Yeah.
Okay.
Everything's been ordered, we've seen all the other parts except for the drive shaft itself, and that's the hardest part trying to find, and it's like I said, it's been promised to be here the last couple weeks, and it's not shown up yet, and I got a report today that it's not still here today, so.
Which part's not working?
The whole cooling in the building, the cooling tower itself.
It's working a little bit Saturday.
I don't think it's really working, yeah, I don't think it's really working, it's blowing air around and it just happens to be cool in some areas, but it's not really air conditioning, so.
Thank you.
You ready to develop, Alex, what have you got for us?
All right, so we've got some site plans for the Emerald Baker's Sports Connection, so that's really exciting, my office is starting to review those now, and then, you know, for copies to that one through. From there, our housing walking survey training is going to be tomorrow in this room at 10:00 AM, so essentially, thanks to our partnership with Ida, as I've said a couple of times now, you know, we're going to have the ability not only to just survey our residents about their opinions regarding housing, what they'd like to see, but also do a walking survey of literally every single, that the city lands, and that's going to enable us to have data for grants, it's going to enable us to really visualize where these problem areas are in the community and how to address them. From there, you know, the mayor and I had some coverage on WCA, WCIA about that today, so that's exciting, and I've been working with John out at Lake Mattoon on a $600,000 ID in our grant application. Right now, we're identifying eligible projects to, you know, focus on that, so potentially could be repaving rain and things like that, I've mentioned it here a couple of times. Alcohol or ordinance provisions, still working on that, then a couple of business district and TIFF applications coming in right now, specifically in the South Route 45 area, so we've been navigating that and working on some housing ordinance provisions for planned unit development, and finally, been talking back and forth with a group called Nexite about their alpha map, it's basically a economic development tool, but it also has tourism applications that may be need for us to have. Basically, you could essentially draw a map over Peterson Park, right, and see how many people use this mobile phone data, you can see how many people came there, where they came from, and, you know, what type of person they are, you know, what their demographics are, so it might enable us to better target folks for tourism-related stuff, and it would also allow us to, you know, essentially figure out who are the kinds of people that want to come here, and then where are they going in our community, where do they go in other communities that they don't go here, and how, and then it puts us in contact with, you know, corporations, specifically retailers, things like that, you know, that maybe fills some of those gaps in the community, so it's a really insightful data analysis tool, I'm still learning a bit about it, but, you know, that's all I got.
Any questions, busy, lots of things going on? Okay, council members' comments, we're going to start with Commissioner Grayman.
I really don't have a whole lot, unfortunately, I was flying Thursday when that storm went through, I will say some of the pictures on Facebook of the clouds are kind of awesome, but my flight was not delayed, I was coming back from Las Vegas, so, but I missed all of it, so, other than that, I would venture to say, based on the way it looked, I think the street department did a wonderful job and cleaning it up, and still have a lot to do, but other than that, I have that.
Okay, very good. Any questions for Commissioner Grayman? Commissioner Phipps, let's go to you next.
The street department did a great job and they still are working, in fact, they were out, as I was coming here, they're still out picking up debris and things of that nature on Lafayette, but other than that, I really appreciate their efforts and I've got nothing else.
Okay, any questions? And next, we will go with Commissioner Cox.
Thank you, Mayor. Not to embarrass anyone over here, but I do have to give a little shout out for Good Taste, whoever has the Beatles ringtone, you've got great perspective and everything, so, so, good job, Ed. And then Chief Gaines, my apologies for some of the things that you have to put up with sometimes in your job. With that being said, I do sometimes get my, the hair on the back of my neck stands up a little bit sometimes when we see some of the things that, that you have to put up with on a daily basis, and you always handle things with professionalism, as do all of your officers, and I know I greatly appreciate it, I know overwhelming support of the community and their citizens, appreciate what you do, and the community that we live in, which is a great community and a safe community, wouldn't, would take a 180-degree turn if we didn't have the great police department that we, that we do, so thank you, I appreciate what you guys do. Kind of along those lines, I will say that I have a minor in political science, I do not have a master's, but I certainly hope that the master's program is not at my alma mater on the east side of the county, because someone at a master degree level of education should know that municipality, and I will defer to Counselor Jones here, the city attorney, if I am mistaken, but municipality does not have the legal authority to replace a police department with the sheriff's office, so I think you're, I think you're safe, as, and so is your pension, because as the state statute, so, anyway, that was. So, and before I say anything else, I'll just differ back to you, Mayor.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, we got, let's see, Commissioner Clausen.
Thank you, Mayor.
Last but not least.
Absolutely. I just want to follow what Commissioner Phipps said about the, the street department, ran into Alex, and this is pretty much going to continue through the month of July, and it's kind of a very tedious process, according to Alex, they, they can pretty much do about 14 blocks in one day, because they have to cut up and remove, so that's going to be their, I was the number one focus, hopefully we get a declaration, because I would think with all the counties, I think we would fall into that. And then just, I just want to compliment the finance department and the city clerk's office, I was here last Friday, and I saw a couple ladies in finance dealing with members of the public downstairs, very professional, very polite, and then I came up here and the girls were on the phone. We, we get outstanding customer service from those two departments, and I think so, but I think sometimes that gets forgotten, what? They went through the process, which is pretty, pretty basic. Yeah, so, nobody threatened me, so it was all good, that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Going last, you know, everybody else already covered everything, I would say, so I'll just, I'll actually suggest that someone make a motion to adjourn.
Well, actually, I got one more thing, what's the director out at 911? What's his name?
Matt Hansen.
Matt Hansen, he, he sent me an email on Friday when I was on, in Michigan, but I do want to bring it up, he, he complimented Chief Helgoss with the storm and everything. I know there was a lot of calls, a lot of busy, I think he went in and helped the dispatch center, I think both at the PD and out of 911 at different points in the evening to help, they used some fire trucks to help, I don't know if it was to block off some roads for the police officers or something like that, but I know he did, and Matt sent an email saying that chief, complimenting how well of a job that Chief Helgoss did, and I'm sure all our police department, and like I said, Public Works did a great job, so I think it shows very well that our departments work really well together when there is something going on that needs to be addressed.
Good. Anybody would like to make one final motion?
I will make a motion to adjourn, Mayor.
Okay, Commissioner Cox and a second.
Second.
Commissioner Clausen, and we'll do roll call.
Mr. Grayman?
No.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes. Meeting adjourned.